Time for us to come to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the November 19, 2007 council meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? If not, we need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of Weaverville Wildlife Habitat. And we are pleased to have Dr. Alicia Holtz, retired biologist from the University of Pennsylvania, with us this evening to talk about community wildlife habitat certification. So, Alicia.
We may need to have the lights down a little bit, but we were getting some signals. I'm here tonight to tell you about new initiatives for the town Weaverville. I'm speaking on behalf of the Weaverville Wildlife Habitat Committee, which was appointed by Mayor Stroud as a ad hoc subcommittee of the Weaverville Tree Board. The charge of this subcommittee is to develop a plan for certifying the town Weaverville as a community wildlife habitat with the National Wildlife Federation. As many of you may know, the National Wildlife Backyard Habitat Program. While this is aimed at individual homeowners, they also certify, for example, schools, neighborhoods, and whole communities. At present, there are only 24 communities across the country that have earned the designation of community wildlife habitat. What I'd like to do tonight is to report to you on our progress in fulfilling our charge and also give you a brief summary of our preliminary plan to achieve this prestigious designation for our town. Next slide. There are five requirements that each certified, each individual certified habitat must have in order to fulfill its charge of being part of the community wildlife habitat program. They include the things listed here, which are the basic things that wildlife need to survive and to thrive, as well as, in the last point there, an emphasis on sustainable gardening practices that are basically practices that are environmentally friendly and that encourage the use of native plants growing in their natural state.
The annual Weaverville Tree Board report for 2007. And it is my pleasure to give that report tonight. I am pleased to report that the tree board planted 86 trees in 2007. 16 trees were removed. 56 of these trees were planted with funding from Progress Energy. The Weaverville Tree Board undertook the following projects during 2007. We conducted a townwide street tree survey on Saturday, September 15. We updated the town's comprehensive tree plan. We planned the town's Arbor Day ceremony on May 20, 2007. We earned the town's 17th Tree City USA Award and the town's 14th Growth Award. We wrote a new series of articles about trees and tree care for the town newsletter. Presented beautification awards to three Weaverville property owners. We sponsored a poster and poetry contest for Weaverville elementary school students. The tree board and the garden club partnered to provide a workshop on February 17 about the Willie Hemlock Adelgit problem. We organized two workdays in the Main Street Nature Park, one on March 15 and the other on October 27. We applied for and received $2,000 in funding from Progress Energy for the cost-sharing program that allows us to plant trees on private property. We also received $500 in funding from Quality Forward to plant trees in the Main Street Nature Park. We created an ad hoc committee whose work will be to have the Main Street nature park and the Weaverville community certified as a wildlife habitat by the National Wildlife Federation. The next item on the agenda is approval of the Weaverville Comprehensive Tree Plan. Each of you has been given a copy, and tonight we need to approve that.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
So moved, we approve this comprehensive.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Madam Mayor, I'm, pardon me, I'm personally asked this as an additional item, I'd like to start off.
Oh, please do.
First, let me say, it has no reflection on the appointments that you make. It is not to usurp the authority of the mayor to make recommendations to the council for appointments to boards and commissions. But as I campaigned this fall and the voices I've heard from the people, one of the biggest concerns is things facing the town in the future, the growth, the development, and it was concerned, especially about the development that we're facing in probably the next three to five years, things that we have in this town that we just can't comprehend. And I think we need to have a system set up, especially for a couple of the boards, to evaluate the qualifications of people nominated for the boards so we have some background on the people and we know who we're, when you make the recommendation, who we're voting for. And I'll make a couple of examples. One thing that's going to, that we will be facing in the near future, whether Weaverville goes for its own ABC score, whether we join someone else, we're going to make nominations for a board thing. These people have to be investigated. They have to be vetted in some manner. The appointments to the zoning board of adjustment, especially when we're dealing with major development that they might be facing, it might be important to have people that have some knowledge and background. And when you're listening to engineers and architects and people like this talking and making presentations, having people understand some of the technology and language that goes on and how we do this, I don't know, but I think we need to start thinking about this and planning for the future rather than waiting that all of a sudden someday it hits us and we don't have a plan for it. And what I'm suggesting is for the council to be thinking about this, we might need to set up a workshop to talk about it and start thinking in some manner how we want to go about maybe having a pool of qualified people for certain boards that the mayor can select from. But again, it's something I think concerned me and I'll just present it to my fellow council people here tonight for discussion or any comments.
I would like to offer a comment. As someone that doesn't know everyone in town, sometimes it's very difficult for me to make an informed decision when I don't know the folks that, that well that we're voting on. We've asked in the past to get resumes, a list of their credentials, and I think we've started doing that. And I can say that I'm very impressed with the folks that we're, tonight that we're going to vote on. But I echo what Jean says, I think it'd be awful nice if we had a period of time that we could at least have a meeting with the candidates, at least just go out and have a cup of coffee and just ask a question, why do you want to serve on the board? And I think that, I think if we had just a little bit more time, I think we could do that and make good decisions.
I think it would be good to have a pool because as we go forward, it would be, in my opinion, it would be good to not only have the qualifications, but to have a cross-section of diversity of people from different segments of towns, different backgrounds, different ages, and so forth, so that we do have the cross-section of the population represented both geographically and demographically, as well as age and gender.
There are, a lot of towns have application processes, and they have an application that you can pull off online and fill it out and submit it to the town. So Doug, you're exactly right, so we can have a pool of candidates that when an appointment is, is coming up, we can go to that pool and say, are you still interested? And if they are, then we can start to process that one. But there's a lot of towns that have an application process.
Chris Crawford to the Weaverville Board of Adjustments. And it is my pleasure to recommend his reappointment to the, that we recommended to the Buncombe County Commissioners as our ETJ member on the zoning board of adjustments.
I'm so moved that we recommend him.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
And I don't know if we can, can we go back to the previous discussion for just a second?
Sure.
Do we want to, do we want to have a task force or a committee to look into this?
Yeah, I, I would like, I would like something to go forward with this as far as the mayor appointing a couple of council people or work with town management to come with some ideas to present to council for the things that we've discussed.
So perhaps a couple of the council members would like to work with the town manager. Are there any volunteers?
Any.
Jean, any study?
Luckily, I've known most of them, you know, over the past 16 years, but there are a lot of them that I would like to, you know, there's one here tonight that I don't personally know. And I think it was a good idea to get to know them a little bit, like said, over a cup of coffee or whatever. And I know there's some of the others that don't know as many even as I do.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Madam.
Well, you're welcome. And we will now go to the next item on the agenda, which is the appointment of William Biggers, John Dankle, and Jeff McKenna to the Weaverville Board of Adjustments.
And these all seem like qualified people, so I recommend them reappointing.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And I must point out that McKenna, what's his name, Jeff McKenna will be replacing, or what, Karen Ruffin. And he, his appointment will be good until April of 2008. Next item on the agenda is a request from Windsor Alty, is that, is that what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Alty Company, 52 lot subdivision on Pleasant Grove Road. And has this been approved by the Planning and Zoning Board?
Yes, ma'am, it has. This is a project that has made, distributed the Planning and Zoning Board about three times. Started out with about 50 some lots quite some time ago, ran into issues with sewer line, and they phased it back down to four lots or five lots. And now that the sewer issues MSDs in the process of upgrading the sewer line along Rimms Creek, that they will be able to provide sewer to this project. And so the developer has come back, gone to the Board of Adjustments, excuse me, to the Planning and Zoning Board, and has made this request. It has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Mike, I have a question regarding, I was fortunate to be to attend that meeting.
Yes.
And this probably is something that Patsy can help out with.
I'll try.
But one of the conditions that was mentioned there is, I think Zane called him, brother Ronco, Ronco had joined proper. And it was pointed out that, you know, infrequently, but maybe once every five to 10 years, we have these torrential rains. And we have this very heavy runoff. The land has changed from what it was years ago, vegetation's been removed and so forth. And one of the stipulations was that they wanted to make sure that if this development went forward, that they had some kind of guarantee that whenever this torrential rain occurred, it may be five years, and it went downstream and damaged property and so forth, that this could be rectified and with some kind of binding agreement. Now, he said that the Windsor Alty was certainly willing to go forward and come forth with an agreement that would be satisfactory to him and work it out. But as we all know, when you take and you create a subdivision and you have a property owners association and they vote on certain things, that sometimes things can fall between your cracks in the future. Now, while that is a, an agreement between the property owners and the developer, I guess my question to you, Patsy, is if the council members sign off on this, we don't have the legal documentation system protected. I spoke with Zane and he indicated that they were talking about maybe the homeowners having some kind of insurance policy and so forth. But I guess what I'm saying is, I hate for three years from now, well, I hate for any occurrence to occur, but it would, I wouldn't want to see three years from now, someone come back and say, well, the council approved this and this situation was known and yet it was not properly handled or protected. So can you give us some advice on how this should be handled? This is between those two parties, but it's a conditional sign off.
And actually, you don't have, you don't have a subdivision procedure here that's quasi-judicial, that's with conditions. So it's strictly a technical approval if they go down the checklist and they comply with the technical requirements. But let me ask, Mike, is this in the ETJ or is it?
It's in the ETJ.
If it's in the ETJ, I believe it's subject to the county stormwater requirements.
It is.
And so they would have to comply with those. And those are pretty substantial now that have been adopted. But, and would the homeowners association be taking care of the stormwater system?
Correct.
Only if a town accepts the stormwater system are they responsible for any, any maintenance or any repairs to the stormwater system. There is a case in North Carolina about liability for stormwater repairs if the town is responsible for maintenance of the stormwater system. But in this case, where the town is not going to be maintaining it, but it's the homeowners association, they would be the one responsible for that.
So as I understand it, this agreement is going to be something between the two private parties?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. What would they, be put in covenants for the homeowners association? Is that how it would be done?
Most likely, and, and the, typically, although I don't know exactly how they're going to set up this, but if it's private streets with the private stormwater system within the street system, then the homeowners association is responsible for maintaining that.
But the damage from runoff to other people's property, how would that be handled?
It'd be the responsibility of whoever caused that excess runoff and damage, so that if it came from that subdivision as a result of the stormwater system, a defect in the stormwater system, and if that is owned by the homeowners association, notice there's several ifs in there, but whoever owns that and has responsibility for maintenance would be the entity that you'd look to, to be responsible for any damages.
Mike, I have a question or two. The plan shows a common area for stormwater detention. Do we know what sort of detention facility is planned for, really a rather large lot that takes up the space of better than two house lots?
The developer's here with his engineer, and I'll turn that question over to them. Now, it does have to be Buncombe County Stormwaters.
I understand, but I looked at the checklist and that had not been approved at the time the checklist was completed and sent to us. And there's a notation that the erosion control plan is pending and the stormwater plan is pending.
The answer, I think, is that we have to sign.
Could you touch the microphone, please? And give us your name, please?
My name's Drew Norwood, I'm president of Windsor Alty Company. And back up about two, three years ago, I guess, when we began looking at this piece of property, I went up to Mr. Molder, I mean, Zane and Cole, and we came up with a, there was no stormwater retention retention at all. We put this, designed a stormwater retention pond, and then also got, because that would hold back, which is basically the same thing as Buncombe County is coming in requiring that, to revert it to him to push the stormwater retention over on his property. And what I got here is we got a piece of property that does like this, and there's a huge drainage ditch that goes down through his property. He's worried about excess rain and a heavy storm penetrating that ditch. So I agreed with him, and we would put it in homeowners document, cause to be not money put in every month, a lot of homeowners on an annual basis a month, to basically build up the burden so that if there is any excess to handle that ditch, they would have the money in hand to come and fix it. And he was comfortable with that. He and I talked after the meeting, and I said, you know, one way we may be able to handle this, maybe we'll get an insurance policy for it, but whether we can or not, I don't know. But either an insurance policy or setting up funds to do this. But having said that, this retention pond is such an enormity, it's going to take a half a range for it to cause any problem with his property. We wanted to do that three years ago. I developed mainly in South Carolina. We've been doing stormwater retention in the last 20 years, and North Carolina, just what they're requiring now, I've been doing forever. So we used to doing that. I would go put that in anyway, but I won't sign a settlement until I go out of the ditch. I won't get in that. So that's the, that's, we've had to revise that, tweak it and change it a little bit to meet the new Buncombe County Stormwater Ordinance. But that's what it is, the reason the size of it is, is to meet that ordinance.
That plan sheet does not have the pond in it, but does the pond have a riser in it for drawdown?
This is Don Hunt, the engineer, to explain the details.
You'll need a motion to approve.
No, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The next item on the agenda is a request from Tom and Lori Miller for a two-lot subdivision on New Stock Road. And this too has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Yes, it has.
Are there, is there any discussion? Any comments, questions?
Move, we approve it.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of a conditional use zoning district for Weaver Boulevard. And who is here to speak to this?
Madam Mayor, may I give an explanation of our process that we're looking at? Before you, you, your, on the application, we do have a flow chart that kind of explains the process that the developer would be going through. We have received a petition for property, which we know as the McPhail property on Weaver Boulevard, to receive a CZD, Conditional Zoning District, change in the district. We have looked at it, and it brings it to the town council tonight for your further consideration. Any action on your part tonight doesn't mean that the project will move, will be approved. It just means that you're willing to, for the developer, to take the next step in developing the plans, developing the traffic studies, and those types of things. You can review it, you can turn it down tonight, and that's the end of the project. You can say, we'd like for it to go on to the next step, and it can proceed, which would include public involvement, our community meetings. Then it will go to also review by the Planning and Zoning Board for, with the compliance with adopted plans. Then it comes back to you once again for your consideration after having the Planning and Zoning Board's input. At that time, you can either agree or disagree with the process moving forward. If you choose to allow it to move ahead, then it will go to a public hearing. At that time, it will come back before you, and at that time you can approve it or reject it for the final time. If you choose to approve it that time, then it is a change in the zoning map, or you can stop the process at that point. So it will actually come forth, council, tonight, and then two other times if you choose for the developer to proceed with this, this project. That's just a summary of our process that we, that we have.
Mike, I guess this is a question for Patsy. By looking at this project tonight, is this any way per our lawsuit that we have against us right now?
No, right now it's still pending with the North Carolina Court of Appeals. We've had the oral arguments, and the three-member panel has it before them to make a decision and write an opinion about it. And that argument was, I think it was around September 19, 19 or 17, one of those two dates that's sticking in my mind, about mid-September. It could be any day. Every other Tuesday is when they issue their opinions. I don't know when we'll get one, but it's, would not be prejudicial to that for you to consider deciding whether or not to send this to the Planning and Zoning Board, so.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Clay Moody. I'm a landscape architect with Design Associates in Asheville. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the developers of the proposed Weaver Village project. We're here before you tonight to request your consideration for the re-zoning of approximately 13 acres of R1 zoning property with its sole access point being from Weaver Boulevard to conditional zoning district CZD. If you would look at the board right here, this is an exhibit to try and give you a vicinity map to try to give you some. Now, this is the site plan, underlined by the aerial photography of the development. This shows the conceptual development scheme for Weaver Village. And again, just here, that's where the McPhail House will be, right there. That's where it will be relocated. Now, in this plan, I'll be able to try to illustrate the concept of this mixed-use development, mixed-use development. In the front, along Weaver Boulevard, we have the commercial portion of the development, transitioning back to office retail uses. And then here in the back, we have approximately 19 to 20 residential uses. Any feedback please, over to the next board. Now, this is a color-coded exhibit of the development, and again, over the aerial, but the light orange represents the commercial development of the project. The commercial development represents approximately 4.42 acres of the 13 acres, which is approximately 34 percent of the development. Again, it's for users, and the uses, the typical users, as illustrated in this plan and the site plan that you're looking at, would be, there are two banks shown, a drugstore, a food service. a food service, or a restaurant.